This conference will now be recorded.
Play with it, run with it.
Brian, Adam, you ready whenever you're ready?
Alrighty. We'll call the regular city council meeting November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Roll call, all council is present and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, first off, we got approve the agenda. Jody, was there some things you wanted moved?
Yeah, I.
Or, yeah.
Um. I'd like to move to strike the employee supplemental benefits. I don't think we have time at this point where we're at to uh. We need to spend more time like this on the budget than we do.
There's those but those benefits are are employee costs. It's not being paid for by the city. That's just voluntary benefits the employees pay for out of their own pocket.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that. I thought it was a.
Nope, that's not, that's just like, it'd be the same thing as like your, your uh.
The like affluent.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Alright, I withdraw my motion.
Alright, was there any, um, I guess I want to talk a little bit about the financials, October.
Okay, so let's remove.
Yeah.
Uh, what's your, you want to do accounts payable and financials or just financials?
I'm sorry, accounts payable as well.
And.
Okay, so take two and three off of the consent agenda and I will move them to numbers five and six on new business.
Hmm.
There.
I.
I don't have a second page.
I don't.
Could be on the back.
Did they have?
No, there's nothing on the back. Well, here. It's like you, it turned out like this.
Oh. Turned out, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
I get more.
But it should be three and four, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
You said four or five, I think. It should be three.
I updated the agenda before the meeting, so I apologize if you didn't. Even if our copies do not have.
That's all. Is that all it was just?
Well, I'm gonna say three and four and then whatever else he's got.
Alright.
I am sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, good.
Put your old ones up here.
Alright.
Thank you.
Do not get any parts.
It's all current done with.
Okay. Okay.
So this will be on the new business.
I have that.
Who will be five and six?
Correct. And then if you can add Dan Petsinger to public comment. And then if you can also add resolution twenty-two dash seventeen to the canvassing board.
As long as we're looking at stuff, I'm pretty sure I've got the right thing. When I come down to the council meeting, it says August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Yes, that was mine.
What?
August twenty-second.
That's the minutes.
On the minutes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll just.
Yeah, these aren't the right ones because you were online last time, weren't you?
Um.
No, he was gone one.
He was gone.
Oh, you were online in one time.
No, the one before that.
Yeah.
But it looks like it's the proper, because it's.
It just needs to change the date, I think.
On the top, yeah.
Yeah.
I would probably type it from there.
Be October.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'm not in it, it says roll call.
So.
A few hiccups here.
Yeah, I can, if you want to leave that on the consent agenda, if everything looks okay, just change the date.
Yeah, I read them.
Same, that's all I.
Okay, approve the agenda with the um recommended changes.
Second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Chad to approve the agenda with changes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda items. We have the minutes, the midco tower and fix-up grant. Correct, Tony?
Yep.
Everybody have a chance to look at those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Jody to approve consent agenda items and any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Public comments from Dan Petsinger.
Yes.
You wanna come on up?
So, first I wanted to say thank you so much for the response to my emails that I sent out about the ordinance violations. Um, I'm glad to see something is being done. Um, the reason why I wanted to speak today is to find a resolution to this so that it doesn't continue to happen. Um, because um I'm tired of picking up poop in my yard. And I'm, you know, I can handle the dog and that kind of stuff because, you know, it's a small one. I've got good insurance. It can, it can take care of all the stuff. It's just, to me, when you have dog piles in a yard that you don't have a dog, it's. It gets a little bit taken back from that. And once I open the business there, then it's really gonna become a problem.
I understand.
So, I I guess I'm looking for the city to kind of guide this whole issue of what's all gonna happen moving forward. Because I don't see this becoming to a resolution the way that it has been.
Okay, we have a process we have to follow.
Yep.
And they have been issued a ticket.
It's gone through the letter stage, it's gone through the administrative fine stage. I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure Sarah's citation has been issued on this case.
Okay.
So that's where we're at, current.
Okay.
Have you talked to these people at all?
I, so the new people that moved in, I have not.
Okay.
The Garcia's, um, back when I first took ownership of that building, um.
Or the landlord?
No.
When they were renting back in the day, they uh, they were very hostile and they were, they came up with claims like I was yelling at them. I was not yelling at them.
Okay.
I just, I'm done with the confrontation and that's why this, the city exists is to eliminate confrontation like this. So it's not like I haven't ever done anything, it's just, I'm done with confrontation and I'm gonna let somebody else handle it. It's kind of where I'm at.
Do you know which one owns the dog?
Um, it's the new renter or the new people upstairs, it's their dog.
So it's just one dog?
Right now, it's just one dog. It's just a cat that keeps running around.
Is the dog licensed?
I don't know.
I, we've had so many dog licenses in the last two weeks, it's very possible. I, we could check it, do it.
Do that because that, that should be done as well.
Yeah. And the only request that I have from you, Dan, instead of sending me an email, will you call first the city hall and see if Sarah's working or I'm working? Because that day that you sent that on Tuesday, I was doing election stuff and then I had Wednesday off, so I hadn't seen your email until Thursday. So I didn't even get a chance to get on until Thursday. And I know that that's part of the problem that we've had, dropping the ball around times, just the, the time that it happens. So if, if you just at least call city hall and say, hey, is Tony in? And then talk to me or if Tony's not in, talk to Sarah and then you can send her the information, then we can get that documented and go.
Because that's why I've been attaching the video footage on.
Yep, and I, and I have no problem with that, but I would like to get, to, to do it today, you know, so that we can go talk to them right away instead of four days later, five days later, now there's snow on top of it, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I understand, I just basically I'm trying, because it's winter time, it's less likely to happen during the winter time. At least on my side of the property from what I've seen. It's just moving forward, I want to make sure that this doesn't continue to be an issue at this point.
Yes.
It's, you know, I can be a nice guy up until the point where, you know, it becomes hostile in my sense. So and at that point, then the rules are the rules.
The only other thing that I'll say is that if the, if the, they go through and do the whole ticket process and everything goes through, any cost that you have associated with stuff can be got back through restitution, so keep track of it. If you do anything, anything that costs you money to take care of, that's part of that whole process too. So.
Because that was gonna be my next question, if it does continue, I'm gonna have to continue cleaning up the poop, the manure out there, and then I'm gonna have to dispose of that appropriately because I don't know where it came from. It's considered hazardous waste at that point. So, and that's kind of the reason why I'm trying to make sure that we're all on the same page in what we're gonna do. And that's making sure what I can do and like Tony said, to keep track of this stuff and I, I will. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yep, I appreciate that because, like you said, I, I feel bad when you send something and then I can't get to it right away because I have something else going on. That way, if you call city hall, at least whoever's working that day can start that process, walk up to the police department and say, hey, you're, let's go. Or if it's a letter that needs to start, we start that process right away and instead of waiting three days before we send something that's sent that day. Makes the process go faster and we get to that next step.
Well, and Dan, I need to apologize too because the, the very first email that I replied to, I said I, I forwarded it to, or I included or forwarded it to, it didn't, I didn't notice that you didn't have Tony on there. So when I replied, I replied all, but he wasn't on there, so he didn't get it.
Yeah.
So, but the second time I noticed it, so.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
Well, that's, that's why there was a delay that first time.
That's okay, it's just, it hasn't just been this, you know.
It's been.
It's, it's been in, in, earlier in the season. I mean, so this ended up being the first time I've notified.
When did these people move in?
I don't, I, I don't know for sure, I'm not familiar with the new tenants.
They moved in back before the, the house went up for sale. I could go back in the video and actually.
Oh, I thought you meant like new tenants recently.
No, no.
Okay, that, that I know. I was just curious.
So is, so the dog's not on a leash or is it on a leash and it's long enough it comes to your property?
It's never on a leash.
So if it doesn't have a leash, if it doesn't have a license coming on your property, I mean, it seems like there's a bunch of things.
That's what they got the ticket for, right?
Uh, the ticket is for the not cleaning up the waste of the dog, I believe.
Okay.
Can we make them get rid of the dog if they don't have a license or make them get a license?
Make them get a license.
Get a license and a leash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's an ordinance, dogs are supposed to be on a leash.
Yeah, like, like I said, I don't, and without looking at the, the list, I couldn't tell you if there was, but like I said, I, I'm not even kidding you, actually, that we've had twenty god, new dog licenses in the last weeks. So.
Interesting.
Are those annual? Do they have to come each year?
No, it's life.
It's just a one time.
Yeah.
Well, but do they have to register the dogs whenever they get new ones?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm, I haven't looked that closely.
Yeah, 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 no. When you, whenever you have a new dog, you have to come in. So.
So it, it has been addressed and.
It's continuously being addressed.
Yeah.
We'll keep on it, Dan.
And I do appreciate, you know, law enforcement going out there because I didn't see that they looked and they did actually find it. I was, I was debating if I wanted to go put flags over the piles where.
Well, and the other thing you addressed too was the, the parking stuff. And unfortunately, there's times when we don't have anybody working after two and sometimes they don't come till after eight. But um, the police department did knock on the door and remind them they're not supposed to park there, so hopefully that will be eliminated. And then I, I also know that last year we had trouble with them shoveling their sidewalks, so I talked to the police department today and they're going to remind them of that. So hopefully we can nip some of this stuff in the butt for you and then it doesn't have to happen.
And that's the thing, you know, you know, I'm trying to follow the rules.
Yep.
You know, I'm trying to follow them, I think everybody else should too, especially with the type of relationship it's been with the neighbors. You know, I think that fence really did help as far as delineating that because, I don't know if you guys are aware, but again, the upstairs couple, their kids were over playing football on my side with the excuse that, well, you got this open place here and we wanted to play twelve, full twenty yards. I said, well, why aren't you playing?
Park is across the street.
So the sheriff was actually called that day because NRPD didn't have anybody on staff. So it has been an ongoing issue, the ball didn't make any physical damage, but it had been, it hit my, my condenser unit and the windows and stuff. So, I mean, it's becoming kind of an issue with the neighbors and I just want to make sure that the city's aware of what's going on. So it gets documented and so that that way we can potentially resolve this in some way, shape or form.
Well, I'm glad to hear the fence has helped. It looks nice, I like, you know.
And I didn't want to make it intrusive and I think that that got the picture across that this delineates the line and.
Yeah.
You know, I see so many privacy fence going in, it's like, okay, now we don't need privacy here.
Yeah.
So I do appreciate that feedback. So, and I'm probably going, just so you guys are aware, next summer here, we're going to be taking down that tree that's on the property line there. Um, so you might get a complaint from them, but according to the state, um, since it's on the property line, I'm, I'm gonna incur all the costs for removing it and it doesn't actually belong to either side at that point. So just to be upfront with what you, what's going to happen for next year. So in the case they come and complain that you took down my tree, it's not your tree.
Sure.
So, because it's not actually a tree, it's actually a scrub. I had a neighbor just come in and he goes, you need to get rid of this, and I said, kind of what I figured, so.
Okay.
So.
So you're, so you're pretty happy that things are at least being addressed and they're being talked to?
I, I am, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward of, you know, that we're not gonna just drop the ball on this. Because, you know, I've, I've been kind of a nice guy where I did complain and, you know, something, you know, police showed up or whatever. And it kind of worked for a week to a month, month and a half, and then all of a sudden it started again. I'm just tired of this, you know, something gets addressed, it stops for a short period of time and then starts back up.
Hmm.
Gotcha.
I think those words came out of my mouth a few times.
So that's kind of the reason where, you know, we just want to make sure that.
Follow up.
We don't, we don't close the case on this and then start all over. I want to continue that this.
Is that still a rental or did the people buy it?
As far as I know, it's still a rental.
Maybe we should send a letter to the landlord and maybe he can address it himself too.
Yeah. Threat to take his license away.
Well, yeah, or something. He probably doesn't even know what's going on.
Correct.
So I mean, if you get them involved, that might help too.
Because the last landlord was not very responsive to the messages I had sent to them, so.
Okay.
That's why, I appreciate the city actually making action on it, so.
Yep. They're, they're working on it.
Okay.
That's all I had for now.
Thanks.
Unless, unless you guys had something for me.
Yeah, alright, Dan. I'll, I'll keep doing the loop too, Dan, we'll be doing it with that, I'll be reading.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, yo.
Have a good night.
Good night.
You too. Okay, under ordinance and resolutions, do you want?
There's nothing under there. Oh, we'll have to do the candidacy board before we adopt that resolution.
Okay, okay. Then we'll go on to the ambulance report.
So the ambulance report was provided in writing.
Yeah.
Um, and then I do have a request for a crew.
For the record, I'm coughing in my shirt.
Alright, so.
So it happens.
I have a request for a new EMT, already passed the background check. So if you want to look at that.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you can.
Are they having trouble with call time?
Uh, nothing more.
Okay, might, might check because there was um a lift assist. I don't know if it was last week or the week before.
Probably was one that didn't show up.
And North had to come.
Oh, yeah.
To do a lift assist. And I would imagine we get billed for that from North?
No.
For a lift, we don't?
No, North bills the patient.
Okay.
I see on the end of the um report that says she was gonna have a total for us, it looks like for a price of cars.
Yeah, there's, there's only two people that need coats, so it's under that five hundred dollars and the coat said it was only seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
What is, what, two extra large for the rig, what's that about?
Uh, they're gonna order a extra large coat and a two extra large coats for the people who only come over and help occasionally, who aren't like active, regular, regular, regular members.
Just to have.
Just to have on the rig so that they can wear a coat if they are in a cold environment.
Okay.
Okay. Should we make a motion first to approve the winter coats?
Uh, you don't have to worry about that anymore.
Because it's under, it's, okay, so it's really gonna be two, not three? Or it's gonna be three, but two are gonna be on the ambulance?
I think they're only gonna order two total from what I talked to Sarah today, and they're only seventy-five dollars. She thought they were gonna be two hundred, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I guess I have a question on how many we actually have on the crew and I mean, we're adding and adding and adding and, you know, that's gonna cost for schooling and training and all of that at some point. Where are we at, do you know?
I don't know for sure, I believe this one's a daytime health coverage person.
Last I heard, we had sixteen.
Yeah, but that's one of those things again where.
Well, I know you gotta have extra, but, you know, I'm.
And a lot of these people are on other services as well as their primary service and they're covering the cost of.
The primaries, that's as long as I'm.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're gonna pay for some of this.
This lady's husband is already on, he joined.
And he's putting time in, lots of time.
And he's already certified, so.
They live in Lincoln.
Yep.
Do you drive all the way down here?
Yep.
Good.
Why are they, why are people doing that?
Because.
Keep their license up?
No, because for, for that person specifically, the other services, it was something to the effect of they wanted like full-time people all the time. And this was the service where he could put his forty-eight hours in and still maintain his license and still enjoy what he was doing without having to be like a major hospital service.
Lesser two vehicles.
Yeah. Alright, um, so first, first we want to do the um hire.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Let's say a name.
Yep. Jennifer Lacy.
Okay, motion by Chad, seconded by Jody to approve Jay's.
Jennifer.
Jennifer Lacy to the ambulance crew. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay, you don't need a motion for the coats. Um.
Need to approve her.
Just to approve the report?
Well, you want to jump into that billing discussion first?
Sure.
You're asking about increasing the run pay too here on, on our report.
Yeah, I, I don't think that, I don't think, I mean, we already kind of talked to all the department heads about a bunch of stuff that just happened with them a while back. And with the current conversation we're now about ambulance billing, I think it's.
Yeah.
A little too.
Not only that, but you know, we, I don't know, I, maybe it's been a year, over a year, but I feel like we already raised holiday and weekend pay.
Yep.
You know, we just got.
Yep.
Gotta watch it.
Um, so I, I had a conversation, I had a conversation with Lauren today a little bit and kind of explained my thoughts on stuff. And then I actually talked to Brian on the phone this afternoon for about half an hour. Um, and so I just, I decided to not ask him some, there's a few reasons why I did that. Number one, the weather, number two, I still don't have a good idea of how things work from point A to point. So I wanted to have a conversation with him about what, what is getting missed, what's not getting missed? Is it something Sarah, Joe and I aren't getting done, which is causing him to have issues and delays? Because I don't think it's fair to harp on him if it's something that Sarah, Joe or I are doing that's causing these delays. So I wanted to, to talk with him and I actually got a lot of the answers answered when I talked to him this afternoon. So, um, if you look, you can look at our, um, let's start with the aging report that's the, eight and a half by fourteen page.
That answers a lot of my questions.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's outstanding and when you add that up, that's ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. So, when I talked to him today, the biggest holdup right now is Medicare.
I see that.
So if you look at, if you look at that, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight different calls, totaling close to forty thousand dollars. And I didn't connect to that before I talked to him today, but Medicare did an audit of all their providers. And in doing so, there were documents that had to be resubmitted. And what I learned from Brian is they also were part of this Medicare audit. And they are also having to provide documents to Medicare in order to get claims paid. And talking to Sarah today, we had documents that needed to be filed. When they asked to file the documents, they said, well, only, only Wayne or Karine can file those documents. And Sarah goes like, Karine hasn't worked here for seven years. We've submitted multiple times changes of information to you guys and, and it hasn't happened, so that's what's happening. And then today, when she, she submitted some stuff last week, got a call from Medicare and the guy that was working on it said, oh, I forgot you were supposed to send us those forms, so I closed out the claim and audit. And so next time you submit something, you're probably gonna have to reopen it, you're gonna have to submit those forms back. So, from what I understand is Medicare has not enough staff to process the audit that they've chosen to do on stuff. And that's the holdup on seventy-five to eighty percent of our money coming through.
Well, at least it takes care of it as far as we know what the problem is.
Right, so then if you go to, if you go to the twenty-one versus twenty-two and you look at that, when you put in the ninety-two thousand that we're waiting on, we're only forty-six hundred dollars shy of where we're supposed to be for revenue for the ambulance.
Yeah, I had, I had sent Tony an email asking him to get a comparison of how, so we could see how quickly we were getting the money in each month compared to where now.
And it's not off that much.
No.
But if it's the Medicare, that explains a lot.
Right. Yep, there is a self-pay that's totaling like twenty thousand dollars and he said that we should probably send that one to collections. So I'm gonna be working on that with Sarah.
Okay.
One person for twenty thousand?
It's like multiple months of calls, the way I think, so.
It looks like we over budgeted our, our anticipated revenue by about fifty thousand dollars for this year.
No, we didn't.
Uh, no, because if we, if we collect that all, we'll be within four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Oh, me, yeah. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't budget incorrectly. We just have a big.
We, we.
Yeah.
We estimated what we thought we would bring in.
If we were getting our money in, we'd be dang close.
So once all these problems get fixed, it's very, it's very likely that we may be fifty thousand shy on twenty twenty-two. But next year we may have two hundred thousand in revenue and only budget four hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, because this isn't gonna get taken care of.
No.
Oh, no.
Now it's federal government.
So yes, Jody, then in that aspect, we will definitely be sure.
So that's why there's a difference, that's the price they've charged us so far to do that one.
Five thousand? Five, five thousand?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, the, the contract runs out December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, so we will.
Seven six times twenty-nine.
For the budget time protection, we'll reevaluate that and, and see if it's worth.
How much of time we're going to need to keep it up.
Okay.
So, but that's, that's what I have for you on the, the budget.
I think this is helpful. No, no, this is helpful.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
And, and, and I do know, I do know now, he walked me through how to find all this stuff. So every ambulance report now, I'll give you this agent summary so that you guys have a copy of what's going.
Dan, great. That'll be great.
Definitely helps.
So now, now you can approve the ambulance report if you wish.
Alright.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Lauren to approve the ambulance department report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Shoot, you want to talk about ambulance traffic data?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's separate then.
Yes.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Have you had a chance to talk to Sarah?
Yep, so we went back and we looked and I kind of showed her where, where it was a little low. Uh, two of those months were the months that she had COVID from May and wasn't allowed to be at work. And so that's where those went low and the other ones when she broke her leg. So it's not that she wasn't, and, and we talked and she's put in well above those hours, that was just the stuff that she documented.
It's, it's probably a discussion we should be having with her. Does she, does she feel like sixty, fifteen hours a week is still the case? I mean, there's eleven out of nineteen months that were below sixty. So that's, that's. So that's, that's.
And there were a few over, there were.
Just, yeah, a couple over sixty.
So.
So I think initially, Tony, you had said that we should have been paying her a thousand a month. If we were to pay her a thousand a month and you take those hours into consideration, she would have been getting seventeen fifty-three an hour and that's not what we agreed on. You know, we agreed on fifteen hours a week, sixty hours a month at a thousand dollars. When you do the math, it came out to sixteen sixty-seven an hour.
Right.
So that, and, and that's basically what she's been doing is turning in her hours and getting paid for her hours only.
For?
Hours work.
Right, not full-time or whatever.
No, no, just the direct.
Yeah, and, and that's the way it was paid out when I, I took over and so I just assumed that was, I'd spend change now to where it's supposed to.
I, I went through and found the motion and it was clearly a thousand flat. So my recommendation is we don't make up the difference.
No, I never said that. I was just, I was just saying that that's what.
Okay.
That if we would have paid it out, that's what it would have been.
So I guess it's up for discussion now, what you wanna do, um, going forward.
Well, I have a couple of questions when I saw this. And maybe it's just how I'm understanding this, or when we hired her, a thousand dollars. So did that include, what if she worked fifty-five hours?
Then it was a thousand dollars.
Okay, and if she worked sixty-five?
Thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It was supposed to be.
I mean, that's, yeah, that's how I look at this. So when I, when I looked at this, I'm thought, why do we pay her nine seventy-five and why didn't we pay her eight hundred?
She was turning in her hours.
Yeah, I know. But she has to have a, a record, as an employee, you have to turn in records of your time anyway.
And I apologize, it was, I did not realize that she was salaried and, and so I just, that's what was, Michelle was paying out when I got here, so that's just the way that I assumed that it was, and that, and that's my, my fault.
But then she has her, her injury in there and then she had her illness in there, which makes sense for those months, but then still, shouldn't we have paid her a thousand dollars?
That's what it should have been, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I would say, we should, regardless, that's what she should have been paid.
But the motion said fifteen hours a week.
Yeah.
The motions.
Sixty hours a month.
Yep, fifteen hours a week, sixty hours a month.
Thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars.
So it was, the motion was very clear.
Oh, you know, I understand all of that. I was just, I'm saying to Tony and to the rest of you that when I saw these odd amounts in here.
Right.
To me, it should have been a thousand dollars every month.
Yep.
Like this one month, it shouldn't have been one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Right.
It should have been a thousand dollars.
Correct.
It should always be a thousand.
If you average it all out, it's probably pretty close to what it should be.
Okay, all right.
I, I don't, I don't think there's any reason for us to try to make anything out. I just don't know what to do with the four.
There's nineteen entries and it's eighteen thousand, so nineteen into eighteen would be.
Yeah, he's got it over here. So going forward, what do you wanna do? I mean, she's been asking several times.
I know.
And we've never reviewed it.
You know, the, the other thing is to, 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 to potentially drop down and say fifty hours a week and just maintain a thousand dollar salary.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Which puts it to like twenty dollars an hour, right? Pretty close, isn't that right?
Yeah.
We were paying.
Twenty times fifty?
We're paying our custodian twenty dollars an hour, paying, it's kind of the base sort of pay for.
I would agree to that.
She averaged nine fifty.
And then going forward, I, I would still ask her for hours and just document it, just that she would be paid.
It has to be documentation of the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's kind of where I was leaning when I was going through this, I thought, well, obviously, most, a lot of these months don't meet the sixty and take out the COVID and the.
Right.
Yeah.
It still doesn't meet sixty, so maybe it doesn't require that anymore. You know, I think she's done a pretty good job.
I think she's done a really good job.
I think it all depends on what's going on and also, you know.
Oh, sure.
There's a lot of trainings that are coming up or, I mean, it all depends on what's going on.
Well, she's done things where she had, had the crew out here and she's had people come in and sit in the ambulance.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff, she doesn't put on that list.
No, I bet not.
No.
I don't know, when we had the night out, did, was she did, was the ambulance, yeah, the ambulance was down there. Yeah, she was there.
Down there for. I, I, I believe that.
So there's other things.
I believe that if you expected fifty hours from her at twenty dollars an hour for a total of a thousand dollars, I think she would be receptive to that.
I would. I'll move to, um, reduce her hours to fifty and maintain the same rate of pay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lauren, seconded by Chad to approve fifty hours a month.
At the same rate.
At a thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Yeah.
All righty, um, a, and actually, my, my finance question on the financials is in relation to her pay. Do you want me to say it now?
No, let's talk about the financials.
Okay. That's fair enough. Fire department report.
What is, oh.
Yeah, what is fit testing?
I was gonna ask, what is fit testing?
So, every year, basemasks have to, all of us have to put on a base mask and we test it to make sure that our lead works.
They got the CO stuff. That's just for your CO.
Oh, okay. So they do that with every fireman?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. It's hooked to a computer.
So not much going on there.
Like a C F A.
I see some training expenses.
And now it's fatal.
Yep.
All right, that sounds good. Move to approve.
It's not much fun to do it.
Oh, second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Joey to approve the fire department report as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Why can't some things just be fun?
That's one thing I don't enjoy is the fix.
Yeah, that's true. There's not enough alcohol involved.
Police department report.
That's been written as well. I don't think there's anything crazy other than, uh, the sheriff's office has invited them to do their firearms and taser with them this year, so.
Joey, I think you have a question on.
That's more for the financials though, I think.
I'm gonna ask it. Why do we have, why did we have to buy a squad rifle?
Because my personal rifle was in there and I was not willing to take on the liability of having my personal rifle in the squad car.
I thought we purchased one a while back.
No.
For one squad.
Oh, it's very costly years ago and it wasn't anything recent.
Oh.
What is this, what is, I know what a rifle is, but what type of rifle?
It's a AR-15.
AR-15.
Yeah.
And we're required to have that in there?
Well, it's part of the equipment, yeah.
But you got a good, I mean, you got a good.
Yeah, it's, it was a thousand dollar rifle for four hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, it's, yeah, but it's, it was a good deal.
You got a good buy, but you have shotgun in there too, don't you?
No, no shotguns.
Why not?
Um, because.
We don't trust you.
It's just a, the thing with shotguns is that everybody has to qualify on everything and shotguns are not really a real, you, I mean, outside of breaching doors and doing a few other things, the rifle is much more useful. So even the sheriff's office doesn't carry shotguns I'm aware of anymore, so.
Yeah, I was watching a video tonight of the, uh, shooting at, at the campus. And it's one of the first times I've seen officers walking with shotguns with slings on. I don't think we ever watch a crime scene, you ever see anybody.
No.
And they may have them, but they don't have them out, but these guys did. And it might just be one of their policies, but.
All right.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to accept the police department report, I guess.
I just gotta stand a little bit in the char.
Chris, yeah.
Okay, motion by Joey, seconded by Jason to approve the police department report as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Unfinished business. Employee policy manual. For your reading pleasure.
Yep.
I spent a couple of weeks looking at it off and on.
I like the, I like the transition plan. I think that's pretty straightforward and easy for anybody to understand who's transitioning.
Well, you sit down and explain it to each employee that's.
Oh, yes.
Involved.
Yeah, cause I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to call, I'm basically gonna have to call ISO after the first of the year and then have, I'm gonna have to tell them what amounts I need to move to the different areas to make that all figured out.
You're gonna do that in one time?
Yeah, my plan is to, after the, after I do the last payroll in December, I'll write down all those things and do my calculations and then I'm gonna talk to them actually, not next week, but the following week to get all that set up already, so that it's ready to go. And then once that's done, I can just put those funds in and then it'll, it'll show up other time.
Okay. And then it'll just show up on their pay stubs, PTO.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the, the people who have worked here for a long time, Sarah, myself and Eric, will have that extended sick leave bank.
Yeah.
On there. But basically those are, us three are the only that'll have that.
Otherwise, I, I would say the rest of.
I thought it was good.
I hate.
My opinion is it's good.
I, I shiver when I see sixty-two pages for an employee.
Aye, and so, so what I did is I took all of our discussions, all the stuff that you, we talked about, and then I took the legalists of these, of these most recent, this is what you should be using, and I changed what had mattered to us and added things and took things out that didn't apply to us and.
There we are.
Well, one of the things I like is that if the legislature or federal government changes stuff, it'll be a lot easier now for us just to go in and change it, approve it, and move on.
This was pretty outdated.
Oh, yeah, it was bad.
Probably nineteen.
Two thousand and six.
Six, yeah.
Tony, this is just nuts and bolts, but on page three and five, they got error bookmark as a find out.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure all that stuff works out.
Yeah, it's, it's. Before that, it was probably nineteen seven.
The other nice part of, the other nice part of that too is once, once that extended sick leave benefit is gone, that's a big chunk of that policy.
Oh, yeah, well, good, oh, good point.
Yeah. Um, and then each time it's updated going forward, I think if you just did a revision page.
Yep, and then on bottom, date, time, revision and what was changed.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So I would, I would like approval of that and then a separate approval for the PTO transition plan.
I move to approve the proposed, um, employee personnel policy effective January first twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Chad to approve the employee manual. Policy manual, I'm sorry. Final draft, effective January first, two thousand twenty-three. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
And same as before, the transition plan is, as we discussed, uh, basically it's just, you guys hit it on the head and made it real simple, so.
Yeah.
It'll change over pretty quick.
I think it's good.
The motion approved the PTO transition plan is drafted.
Second.
Motion by Joey, seconded by Chad to approve the PTO transition plan. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. City logo. I see you, you're, you intend on rebranding everything including vehicles, huh? Did we budget for that?
Not this year, but we'll budget for next year.
Well, that's gonna be for twenty-three, did we?
So this is the logo I stripped off the corn like you asked and kind of replaced stuff and it's the Greek Jerusalem, it's the new Jerusalem.
I was, I like it.
I was approached by a resident about, also it's in the paper was, you know, new logo when Eli's, you know, who wanted, you know, who wanted the contest, they were all.
Eli's gonna do a story on it next week.
Okay, all right. We'll find the answers quick.
So this is the, based on the recommendations you made, this is what city staff has decided. Looks, I think it looks clean and crisp and nice.
Okay, so as far as the ambulance goes, we just did that.
No, I, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking, put it on the doors of the city trucks, the car, and then the, the park sign.
Not the police?
No.
Oh, good, cause I like the police.
No, I'm, I'm just talking like the side doors and the pickup trucks, if we do new graphics on the sweeper, the.
Okay.
Big truck, and then our backup car that we let people use.
And your letterhead for.
Letterhead, if the policy manual have this on it now.
The water tower.
I'm, I'm hopeful that when it's time to paint the water tower, that this would be put on the water.
I hope so too.
Polo shirts for the city council?
Yeah, well, okay, but I, 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 I put off buying shirts with three trees on them because I was hoping that this, so that I could have some nicer.
I would like to see it on the door or on the window.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
That wouldn't be bad.
All the way across, all five.
So it's up to you, but if, if, if you're, if you like this as much as I think the city staff does, if you wanna adopt this as our new logo going forward, I would, I would do it.
As long as that, as long as we understand it won't go on the emergency vehicles, that's perfect.
Or the fire truck.
Or fire trucks.
It's an emergency vehicle.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Chad to approve the new logo. Um, you got the rest of it.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Tony, just write it down.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Hey. Variance application.
All right, so we are in the middle of our variance application for the wastewater treatment plant. Their new big thing is chloride and still on phosphorus, so we need to put together a variance application. I am not qualified to put together this variance application based on the specs of our wastewater treatment plant. So, uh, John Groutmann, who is the, one of the engineers on the plant, said that Bolton may would be happy to facilitate that process, they would do the initial application and then they would also come in and do, so basically it's a real quick application on wastewater, on the PCA's website, and then they basically spit out a bunch of stuff and then it's calculations on stuff and how to figure it all out. I don't know that, whatever. So he said, three thousand in the low end, five thousand on the high end, that comes out of the sewer budget, um, and that will most likely, and I'm assuming that that probably won't be finished until after the first of the year, so.
Is there a deadline or no?
No, they're, they're backlog right now, so I mean.
They're still working on the Medicare audit.
But from, from what I, from what I understand, from what John was saying, is that most of these variances are for fifteen years, so we wouldn't have to do this process again most of these variances are for fifteen years, so we wouldn't have to do this process again for probably fifteen years unless they choose a different chemical that they want.
Yeah.
Okay. I might not have been listening close enough, but why do I need to apply for the variance?
Because we've seen the limits required.
We don't meet the limits.
Oh, okay. I know.
A lot of complaints.
Or, or asking for forgiveness instead of permission.
Yeah.
So while, to put it into, so they want like zero chloride, which is but, we're talk, for our plant to basically get chloride out of our plant, coming out of our plant, I was quoted between five hundred to one point five million dollars to get that taken. Well, we don't have that kind of money, the state knows that nobody has that kind of money, so that's why this grant process is allowing it's a fee.
Okay.
That's right.
So you're just looking for a motion.
To approve up to five thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Lauren, to approve Bolton and Mink to do our wastewater variance application. Three thousand to five thousand, correct?
Three thousand to five thousand.
Yep.
Up to five thousand.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Oh, that's good. Um, no, we're going in order, Jason. Don't throw me off.
I was just grouping.
I'm trying not to cough, so. New business, employee supplemental benefits, I assume that this big old packet here.
Yep.
I heard you say that this is of no cost to the city.
Yep, so, right now, we've got just bits and pieces of stuff that people can apply or to do. This company came in, basically handles everything that we possibly could, but puts it on one system, it's all online, so the employees can sign up for anything they want to, they'll see what their payroll cost is per check, and then, once a month, they spit me the information I deducted from their paycheck and that stuff.
I thought it was a pretty decent system and a pretty decent price.
And they say it's competitive, it's more competitive than Aflac, it's more competitive than a few other things. The thing that I like is it puts it, all the supplemental, supplemental benefits in one spot for the employees to look at, it's not, let's go here to get this, and here to get that, and here to get that. And it's one, one package.
That's what I, I thought there was a lot of cost to us.
Nope, nothing, and, and, in fact, the online cost, that they're, they're paying that cost for our employees to have access to that.
They have, who's they?
This.
Area, company.
So it's free, it's free to the city. Okay, um.
Well, it's built in.
Okay, so these are, these are add-ons for the employees.
Yeah, they want dental or vision or.
So where are we at with the group insurance?
We're gonna stay with what we're at.
Are you? Have they announced an increase yet?
No, it's gonna be what they told us, it's nine point three percent, it's already built into the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, the, the, the stuff we were hopeful for was actually, it costs, they wanted twelve hundred dollars a month to run the plant, which would put us over what we're paying for health insurance now.
And we only have one employee on the insurance, correct?
Yep.
Is that where it will remain, do you think?
I know for next year, yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm waiting, I have some other things that we can talk about, but I've been waiting for, I, what I'd like to do is, I'd like for Bob at the care center and myself, and our insurance guys to sit down together and see if it makes more sense if we can find a way to break the city off into their own, or if there's a loophole that we can get through so that it's a little cheaper for the city, or do we do one policy for everybody and see if we can get it cheaper, instead of having a city group and a care center group?
Oh, yeah.
But I didn't feel comfortable trying to get that done in a month and a half for this year, and we'll be okay for this year, so.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Alright, water enterprise.
I, I will need a motion to approve that, please.
The?
Supplemental benefits.
I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental benefits at no cost to the city.
Uh, yeah, why, why do we need a motion if it's no cost to us?
Because if anybody else comes and tries to sell supplemental benefits to the city, I wanna say this is a council approved package.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Chad, second by Jody, to approve the supplemental insurance package at no cost to the city. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay, water fund budget.
So, I spent quite a bit of time on this.
How about the sewer?
That's coming next month, or next meeting.
Okay.
Trying to give my.
At least we're gonna have a budget for two thousand. At least, at least you're gonna have a two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Yes.
I think we operated all year without.
Yeah, there's nothing in the comments.
Great.
Um, so basically, what I did is I worked through the water fund budget based on the numbers that we just updated everything on. Um, the only thing that I did change is, so, as of this year, right now, there's a one dollar capital surcharge on all water bills every month. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that we increase that to two dollars instead of one, which, that goes directly into just capital expenditures, so fixing things that we need to maintain the water fund.
So instead of six thousand dollars, we'll have twelve thousand dollars.
Correct, yes.
A month.
No.
For the year?
Yeah.
Going into our capital.
Yeah. So, if you look at this, basically, I really did, I really over, I tried to budget high on repairs and maintenance because I know that we've got pumps that need to be replaced, we've got a potential problem with that trickling filter that we may need to address. So actually, I have forty thousand dollars in the budget for repairs and maintenance.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yep.
Does that include that boiler that you were just talking about?
Uh, that's for a different plant. But yes, so, and then, um, I, I, I put in some
Is contract fees, people's?
Uh, yep.
Yeah.
I thought that was only eleven thousand.
Um, so it's, it's people's.
That's not people, that's not water, it's, it's sewer.
Oh, yeah, people's service, so that, so that contract fees is for, um, well, right now, it's for Andy doing the stuff for the water, and then there's some other, oh, whoa, water tower. It's a water tower, it's a water tower maintenance plant, that's what's in there.
How come insurance, utility, or electric and heat, you have zero in the budget, nothing?
Well, that's a good question. Where do you see that?
Down person.
Right here.
That's mileage expense and hotel expense.
That's not.
No, she's right.
It's right here, electric, heat, and, and insurance.
Oh, I don't have nothing in mine. Oh.
That's true, we have this one.
I mean, mine don't have any figures at all, it's just a blank.
So let's table that till next month, then we'll be put that back in there just to make sure.
Oh.
Okay, so we're gonna table the final budget?
Just let me get, let me make sure the numbers are right, cuz I can tell you that I'm gonna fix it, but then it's gonna be wrong, and I want another record to do this, so let's, let me, let me fix it. It's not, it's not gonna change much, it's just that I might have to take ten thousand dollars out of repairs and maintenance, but which is fine, we'll, we'll get back.
Okay.
So let, let's just table that till next month, then I'll get care of it. Thank, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
A motion for that?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so that's tabled. Okay, now wastewater, whatever TP is.
Yeah, so, the treatment plant boilers down, that covers all of the heating in the building. Um, we have to have, basically, lots, they're short. So, um, I'm gonna try to get a second bid, but we're, it's eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty bucks for the boiler.
How much?
Eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Jim and Doo.
Include installation.
That includes installation, we'll have a wiring bill besides that.
Okay.
But that's what, I'm gonna try to get a second quote to see if I can get it down, but that's what it will be if we can't get a smaller quote. And with the weather that's coming up in the next two weeks, it needs to get ordered, they have one, they have one in Albert Lee that can, that can be here in the three quarters.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz it's gonna be below zero next week.
Yep.
Really?
Yep.
Good, good.
So, and they can't, they can't, they can't convert the methane pump, so it's, this, it's just.
I'm sure that's a regional.
And that's their concern, is they start pulling that apart, and it's gonna cost more than it has to buy anyone.
Makes sense.
And I, and I will, I will check with, um, Tom to see if that would qualify under those are fun.
It are fun, it's almost gone.
We haven't spent much of that.
My question to you, I know it might be different for commercial, but some homeowners' policies cover stuff like this for insurance, you just pay the deductible.
It's, uh, I guarantee you that it'll be just like the generator that succeeded its life and that's.
I as well as I've thought about that, we, uh.
Yeah.
But.
You try it. It wasn't hard to ask.
Yeah.
Okay. Stop it.
I'm sorry.
My money.
Can't help it.
Yeah, sure.
My ribs hurt, my back hurts.
So, do we need to approve up to this amount?
Yep.
In case you find something different?
Yep, if I find something cheaper, I will, but if not, this is what I'll.
I'll make a motion to approve up to eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty plus
Wiring.
wiring.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Jody, to approve purchase of a new boiler for the wastewater plant. Up to eleven thousand seven fifty plus wiring. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Maintenance shop boiler.
Maintenance shop boiler is shot as well.
Well, now, why not?
It's just so good, everything's happening.
Race of wars. So, I talked to Eric, and Eric said that, um, Bolins came and looked, and the the boiler that was put in there, they don't even recommend putting into the things because they don't last. So that's what was put in when it was built. Um, he, Eric, did get two quotes for me, so Johnson Heating is fifty-four, sixty plus wiring, and Bolins is sixty-three hundred plus wiring, so those are the two quotes.
Didn't anybody ju, checked with Johnson's heating for the wastewater plant?
No, that's, I'll, they're on my list to call.
How much is Bolins?
Sixty-three hundred.
Sixty-three.
Got it up there, okay.
Is this like a tankless water heater?
I don't.
Those for the import heat.
Yeah, I know, but they use tanks.
Basically, yeah.
They call it a boiler.
Yeah.
I got one.
Okay, guys, you got, um, about a nine hundred dollar swing here, what do you wanna do?
I'll make a motion that we approve Johnson Heating and Air Conditioning to put the boiler in at the shop plus the wiring.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Lauren, to approve Johnson Heating's quote or bid at five thousand four hundred and sixty plus wiring. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Jody, wasn't it?
I, I did. Thank you.
Yeah, Chad and Jody. Good enough.
You are lame, though.
I'm lame, all right. All right, um, accounts payable.
Um, I had some questions on the, uh, accounts payable on the, the notary, is it necessary for both, you guys do notaries?
We always have been, so it, the, the thing about it is, if Sarah's gone or I'm gone, then there's always somebody in the office that's able to notarize documents.
Okay. How often do you get tapped to notarize documents?
Uh, a couple times a month.
Okay.
There's notaries at the bank, too.
Yeah, there's notary at the bank, Reed Waller, the paper's also a notary that I know, so, I just, you know, I know it's only a hundred, well, it'd be a hundred and forty bucks plus your stamp.
How many, is that a yearly thing, or five years?
Five years.
Yeah.
Wasn't there two entries for that notary, one at the Waseca County also?
Yeah, you have to file with the county, and that costs twenty dollars.
Twenty bucks.
Oh, really?
So it's like a hundred and forty plus, you have to buy a new stamp, right?
Yeah, twenty, fifteen.
I was wondering why both of you had to, I thought one or the other would be sufficient, but.
The city has always tried to have somebody here all the time that's available to do that, in case somebody from town.
There's somebody at the bank or something, okay.
It's too late now.
The county office too, I would doubt.
Appreciate your concern, it's too late now, I'm sure it's all going down.
Okay. Do you guys charge?
Something to think about going forward.
No, we look at it as a service to the citizens.
Can you charge?
Yeah.
Can you?
Yeah.
Like, the bank does if you're not a customer.
Yep, that's why I asked, I mean, if it's something that's not a thing that's normal for the city business, do you still charge, or not charge?
What?
You know, like, somebody comes in here and just says, I want to get the notarized, has nothing to do with the city.
He doesn't charge, he doesn't charge, he doesn't charge anybody.
He just said it's a service.
The city of New Richmond, we don't charge.
Doesn't matter what it's for.
I thought, I thought you were using this as something that needed to be notarized for city stuff, that's.
Occasionally, there is, yep.
That's why I thought.
In fact, that contract with the, we just, for the tower, that's.
Yeah, yeah, there is city stuff that needs to be notarized.
Okay.
Can you guys notarize the city stuff, though?
It depends on what it is.
Okay.
If, usually with city something, the city stamp works, the city seal.
Okay.
But, yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, certified crime fighter annual subscription, what, what does that do for us?
That is the, um, that is for the city, or the, is that like three hundred some dollars?
Yeah.
So, this police department was using a thousand dollar a year piece of software, they found this three hundred dollar piece of software instead.
Oh.
So we knocked seven hundred dollars out of our spending.
I didn't know what it was.
Yep.
How about there's a six hundred dollar one on here too, I believe? There was a, but I think that's an annual fee as well, right?
I'm sorry, can you tell me which one you're looking at?
It's, I thought I saw a six hundred dollar one.
Oh, uh, that's for the VCA charges?
That we have to have.
That, so, so the VCA has decided that if you access their website.
At fifty dollars.
It's fifty dollars a month, even if you don't have to.
Use it.
Right. We've never paid for it ever in the city, they just decided that, no, we're gonna pay for it now, so six hundred dollars.
Oh, of course.
Should be a user fee, not a subscription.
It's a user fee, but, but, yeah, but, we don't, the thing is, so they used to only charge it if you had like, if we, if we had, like, so, the Waseca County and Janesville have T-one lines that come into their buildings, and then that fiber connects directly to the state through a secure channel, so they charge them like a hundred and twenty dollars a month or something like that. Well, if you don't do access that way, you've never been charged it, well, there are a lot of small entities they weren't picking up money from because they were using the internet via VPN to, to subscribe to it, and so now they just said, no, if you're gonna do our stuff, we'll, six hundred dollars, that's crazy, so.
Um, I noticed, and I've asked this before, my local, I noticed there's some places, they went to Home Depot, and they went blah, 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 some more places than that.
Home Depot was a cam, uh, Home Depot, that camera for the shop one, that is a, that is a snake camera. So we've had three hydrants that haven't been able to shut off, and so instead of calling somebody at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, this camera will allow Eric and Brayden to snake down and see why it's not closing, why it's not turning off, where the leak's coming from, and that's what that is.
That makes sense.
Happy?
No.
And then there's a, it's like an invoice, a safe portable on the seventh of October for two hundred and fifty, and another one on the seventeenth for two hundred.
Didn't save? Yeah, they didn't send us, they didn't send us a bill for two months, and they sent us two months' bills in one month.
That's what I thought, something happened.
And then they, but, then they sent a bill for the Farland City Days bathrooms, which was in July, just getting that now?
Mm-hmm.
I use them for my party, and they, I had to pay it right away.
No, they, well, it happens, you'd be surprised how often we'll get somebody to call and say, ah, did we send you that?
Alright.
Now, did we, do we take the one from St. Oluflenker, does that stay out?
I think that stays out year-round.
Because of vice.
That would be a split with the sportsman.
Right, that's what I was just gonna say.
Is it being split with the sportsman?
I mean, I said, I, I don't know that question off the top of my head.
How long is this gonna take before that gets cost effective to build a new one?
Depends on how often it gets damaged out there.
Yeah.
What I'd really like to do is, I'd really like to dump about fifteen thousand dollars into that, or that bathroom out there with stainless steel stuff, and then, there it is. Takes a lot of energy to damage the stainless steel stuff.
Yeah, I agree.
But that's grand, that's grand money talk.
At least it's in the back of your mind.
Any other questions on that one?
No.
Nope.
You're okay, Jody?
Yeah, I'm alright.
Okay?
I just noticed that now, there was trees, bottom of the Waseca County hardware, what trees did they buy?
Um.
Right at the bottom, bottom page, no, one up. It's right there.
That was to fix the tree saw that the guys have to, to trim branches with.
Okay. I'm saying, you need to plant trees now.
No. The tree saw had some issues that they had, sharpening a chain and something was wrong, yeah.
Spin, 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 what are we gonna do? Um.
You own something, you're gonna have to spend money on it, that's just how it works.
Well, you have a motion on that.
Okay, motion on accounts payable?
I'll make a motion, except for accounts payable, as they are.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jason, second by Chad, to approve, approve the accounts payable for October. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Financials, I think you answered the question, I think we talked about the revenue for the ambulance. The one thing I would recommend is on the ambulance department. Going forward, I don't know if you wanna go back and do it or not, but I'm looking for it. Wages and salary is zero, I think that's where the director pay should be. So then it's split from the other pay.
Okay.
Cuz she, she gets paid separately.
Yeah, so, okay, so, that, the new one that you're seeing, that one oh six, that new one that you're seeing there, that is what I started for CPR pay. When we do training and we pay the instructors to train, that's what that line item is for.
Okay.
I may, depending on what's used for numbers, be able to put another one for director pay, but, it's very easy for me, if you wanna know, it's very easy for me to print a report for you, to show you what the director's been paying.
Well, okay, going forward, it should be a thousand a month, I mean.
It is, it is, I changed it in the system at salary.
But because it wasn't a thousand, if we looked at other pay, we would know how much we were paying her.
Oh, right, but I, I gave you the records.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, from here on out, it'll just, I changed it to salary now, so it's only gonna pay her a thousand dollars no matter what.
Okay.
So.
All right, if you guys are okay with it staying as is, then.
It works for me.
And we, and like I said, we did talk about the revenue. So that was kind of it for me, except that on the sewer, you know, when we're taking out new, for our new boiler, help me figure this out, our revenue is two hundred and forty thousand? Is that correct?
Hang on, let me get that great window.
Yeah, this is for sewer fund. I think I answered my own question, but I'll say it anyway.
No, go ahead. No, go ahead.
It's two hundred and forty thousand for revenue, and, and we've only, our expenditures are only a hundred thousand?
Why am I not paying?
That can't be.
Wasn't it under sanitation on that work, Tony?
Oh, here's sewer.
There.
Okay, so two hundred and forty thousand, and expenses have been, you know, one hundred and, one hundred thousand, two hundred and eleven fifty-one.
Where's the contract pay?
Contract pay.
Contract.
To people services.
Fee. We pay it twelve thousand a year.
Twelve thousand a month.
Uh, I'm sorry, a month.
Contract fee.
Hundred thirty-eight thousand.
Why is that, oh, 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 yeah, I answered my own question. I was looking at the wrong column, sorry. I got it now.
As long as you're okay with it.
So, we're, we're not, we're losing ground in the sewer.
We will be making up ground. I just checked today. The increase that you guys put through at that last meeting increased our income of about six thousand dollars for the month. So extrapolate that out, that's twelve, that's almost eighteen thousand before the end of the year.
Okay, and then going forward?
There'll be a slight increase again January first. We're gonna have to, to just maintain the health on that one.
Okay.
And then, what's gonna have to happen next year, probably halfway through the year is, I think we'll drop the water rates down, and then increase the sewer rates up, so that there's a, there's a no different, so it's non-different to the water bills. It's just that more is going to sewer than water.
Okay.
So.
As long as you're keeping your eye on the balance.
Yeah, that's what Wayne would do, is he would, once the one fund got healthy, then it switched a little bit until the other one got healthy, and then back and forth. So we're gonna have to play that game for a little while. Cause next year, our water fund is very healthy. And I'm happy where we're at going forward with the water fund. I am concerned about the sewer budget, but I think, what I have planned with what I've been working on the budget, I think we're gonna be okay. Yeah, so like I said, that six thousand increase for just one month should be eighteen thousand before the end of the year. So that should strengthen it a little bit.
That's good, because the year two or whatever we're at here, of not having a budget, not really knowing where we were, was.
Yeah, well, it's tough for me too, to even try to figure anything out, cause I don't know where stuff started out.
And unfortunately, we relied on ad bill for many, many months on.
And what you're talking about is before the eleven thousand for that boiler too, correct?
Yeah, so that'll basically swallow up that increase, yeah. Unless we can use those art.
Oh, yeah, gotcha.
Okay, so we need a, a motion for, if anybody's got any other questions on the financials? No? We need a motion.
I'm moved to approve the financials for October.
Second.
Motion by Jody, seconded by Chad to approve the October financials. Any other discussion? On favor, say aye. Opposed, carry. And we're miscellaneous, nothing administrators report?
Yeah, so I got, uh, just, it's really, continue to work on sewer and water budgets. I thought I had a water done, I just gotta make quick change on that, so we'll have that. Next meeting, you will have the sewer fund and the water fund and the five-year capital plan, hopefully.
Good.
Um, finish up PTO, Doc, finish policy manual, met with League of Minnesota's cities loss control. Uh, Sarah and I tested the voting equipment, did the 2022 general election. And I just wanna personally thank every single election judge that helped us out. It was amazing, it was smooth, everything went well, we didn't have any problems. Um, to Tammy and her staff at the county, great job. Uh, we, uh, I was actually surprised. We dropped off of our, off our election equipment, there were two people in front of us, two precincts in front of us when we got up there. And both of those precincts were missing stuff that they had to return. Just, uh, something they forgot to put in the envelope or something that they had left back, so I had to go back and get it. And Sarah, Jo and I went up there and they went, check, 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 yep, you're good, see you later. So.
Nice.
We, everything went very well. And I'm very happy with the people and, and those volunteers we have. That's just simply amazing to have those people.
Did the, the electronics?
Oh, it was wonderful. Oh.
Well, then they weren't sitting there trying to find the page.
Yeah, I thought it was cool. It was so fast, you got your.
Yeah.
Yep, the only hiccup was, you know, when we had people that registered the same day, there was a couple times during the day where two people showed up at the exact same time they had to register. Well, instead of sending them off to the side to fill out the paper form, then you're stuck completing that whole process before you move on to the next person. But, it's three times as fast.
There was one complaint that I saw about certain people that somehow they wanted, they just moved here and they wanted to register, and they told them to go, if they couldn't vote or something, and, so they went to the, over to the town hall and voted. I said, well, you can't, you know, either you're in one precinct or the other, you can't be, you know, right, you can't vote in both of them.
If they didn't live here, they didn't vote here.
That's right. I said, you know, like.
As far as I'm aware, there were two people that were turned away that.
There was people in front of that, that young couple that was in front of me.
Oh, I must not have been here when you.
You were here, cause you were helping her with the, with the, uh, tablet or whatever the thing is. You couldn't find my name, cause you had, some, you left the date, the birthday in there. It wasn't my birthday. Ooh, it's first thing, then they followed me.
Maybe there's two of you.
Yeah, maybe.
I'll.
You voted twice.
Anyway, in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, even, even some of our elder election judges were very happy to run that system and liked.
It worked. I thought it was smooth.
I got a question here, one comment. Met with League of Minnesota loss control, what is that?
Yep, there's, so that is our, Troy Walsh is our loss control consultant, and basically he just meets with us and says, these are what we talked about the last time that we're here, these are the things that we're working on with you. Um, their big thing was trips calls. So they basically show us what we used for, based on things that had, that we could have fixed or changed, or there's a list of things they gave me about what we could, we should work on.
Sounds like an auditor.
Yeah, it's kind of an auditor.
Why is it named loss control?
They're trying, they're trying to get us to shore up all of our stuff so that we don't have losses to report.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So whether that mean a new piece of equipment, or some storage stuff, or policies or procedures.
That's just another way they can add a fee to the policy.
It's like checks and balances in the office, only having two people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And signing checks and, I don't know, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that go into that.
And then I worked on the labor negotiation strategy, which we'll talk about here a little bit. And then, a big one tomorrow, I meet with the work comp auditor for the league. So basically, they'll audit our money we paid to the city employees and the election judges and the fire relief gambling stuff, make sure that our policy premiums are matching what they're saying, so. Um, I don't know how long it's gonna take, but that's tomorrow. I have everything ready to go. That's my meeting for tomorrow, so. And outside of that, there is nothing for anniversaries and birthdays for this time period, which is kinda weird.
Nobody is born.
That's what I got for you on that.
Okay, do we usually approve that or no?
Yeah, don't we?
Yeah, maybe we do. It doesn't hurt.
Move to approve administrator's report.
I'll second that. Motion by Lauren, seconded by Jason to approve the administrator's report. On favor, say aye. Opposed, carry. Um.
I know I've asked this question before, but we do have someone lined up for snowing.
No. Uh, no bids, um, but I was actually gonna say that, so I'm glad you said something about that. Chief Ruger's husband has a semi and a dump truck, and she said he thinks he'd be more than happy to help us out, so he's gonna put together a bid that he wants to submit.
Good.
Otherwise, there is an individual who's willing to help us out, and so we have names, we have people to call. It'll get done, but we don't have any formal bids that were submitted yet, so. I'm hoping that that's not until January, we have to worry about that.
Yeah, or late February.
Or next, just.
Or March maybe, once, yeah.
And then I, I guess we all saw an email from Tony about his review.
Uh, I don't know that I sent it to them.
No, I don't have it. I didn't get it.
So, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think I sent it to them. I just responded to you. So, Gail had mentioned that we're past, six months should have been the review, which was September. And so, we need to do that. So what I told Gail, what I would like to see is, I will provide you all with evaluations for myself, and then we will close the next meeting at the end of the meeting to do my performance evaluation with the council, if that works for everybody, yep.
Sure, can we get you to evaluate yourself?
Sure, if you want, if that's what you would like me to do, I would do that.
I would like that.
Yep. So what I'll do is, I, I wanna transition the city to what I was using in the police department, so that everything's the same across the whole entire city, so that it all looks the same.
Yep.
So I started working on that today. It's pretty much done, so what I'll do is, and I have it set up that way, that I check stuff first. So what I'll do is, I'll check through and then make five copies, and then you guys can all put your information on, then we'll close the meeting. Next meeting, we'll do our review, and then we'll be done.
Okay, okay, that sounds good to me. Um, along that lines, remember your file is not supposed to be in that office.
It's been waiting for you to take it to the bank since you told me that I had to.
Well, I thought you were gonna look for something that would go in the police.
Oh, I, I have, I have the lockbox ready.
Oh, I think we should do that.
Okay.
I, I mean, don't you?
Yeah, that's what's supposed to be.
Yeah, it's all ready to go.
The only reason it went to the bank is cause we didn't have anything.
Yeah, no, it's all ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we can get that out of there, close that, go from there. All right.
Yep.
Sounds good. Um, okay, anything else before we go to election?
Well, we did talk about selling the tractor and a couple other things and getting a bobcat. Have we just kinda?
Still working on it, still work in progress.
It's probably not gonna happen.
Not until summer, probably.
Yeah, okay.
Till long mowing season?
We're trying to find a one-stop shop to just kinda get it all done.
Put it all together.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it might take a while.
The other, the other problem is just supply. There's just not a lot of supply.
Yeah.
And right now.
I mean, right now, I would love to sell our tractor, because we get way more than this work, but without having something to replace it.
Yeah, you can't wait, can't do that, especially during the snow season. We need the tractor.
If we're bringing up stuff, being on the grant for the siren and all that stuff now.
It's just sitting there waiting to go.
Till we can get everything to be put in? Is that supply and demand also?
No, I'm, I, I, we'll have, we won't have enough money left for the first year.
Cause we had to budget some for.
But is, is, are there sirens out there?
Oh, yeah, yep, yep.
We want, there's no laying time.
Well, thirty to sixty days, I would think.
So they tell you that now?
Yeah, and it's on a ship in Spain. It'll be here soon.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, election?
Yeah, so the city council serves as the canvassing board for the city of New Richland elections. So I've been providing a summary of totals for the state general election. At seven AM, seven hundred and sixteen persons were registered in the city of New Richland to vote. Forty people registered on election day, forty-two military overseas ballots were received.
Wow.
Uh, one federal office only absentee ballot was received, and the total number of people voted for the city of New Richland was four hundred and ninety.
Four hundred and nineteen?
Ninety.
Ninety, all right.
All right.
Um, mayor votes, Christina Petzinger had a hundred and eight, Chad had three hundred and forty-one, there was twelve write-ins. For council member, Lawrence Geltin had three hundred and fifty-three votes, Robert De La Fosse had ninety-two, Jason Casey had two hundred and seventy-nine, and there were ten write-ins. Um, so this is just a recoup of that.
Music outside.
Must be in your coat.
It's him.
Um, yeah, that's just in the recap. So, basically, uh, as the canvassing board, I need each of you council members to sign this, saying that those results are correct.
Do we get to see them?
Huh?
Do we get to see them?
See what?
I'm gonna sign for some, I don't know if you can see it.
It was in the paper.
Yep.
Just keep them all together, please, so.
You just read them to us.
That's what I just read.
Weren't you listening?
I was listening.
Don't. It doesn't matter where I sign, right?
No.
Right under me. Keep it, why would you sign way down here? What is wrong with you? You gotta, you sit.
She wants to share her ink pen with you.
Yeah.
I don't wanna, no.
I got it. Where's my pink one, by the way?
Uh, it's in my desk. Cause I found it on the floor.
Well, I'm going to pass that over to the new mayor, my pink pen. It's a nice pen. It's pink.
Pink.
Oh, boy.
You'll look good in pink.
I had my beard pink one.
You can gavel.
Took three months to.
Why don't we have a gavel? I don't know why I'm gonna gavel.
I don't, I'm glad.
I could use one.
I'll turn it on my leg.
All right, I put that, that together. And then, with that, if somebody wishes to make a motion to approve that resolution.
We don't have to do anything, any action, other than sign that election mark?
Just approving the resolution, that takes care of that.
All right.
Are you well enough to read this?
So for it.
Okay, resolution twenty-two dash seventeen, resolution adopting the election results for the city of New Richland offices by the New Richland Board of Canvas. Whereas the state of Minnesota conducted its general election on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and whereas the county of Wasika has counted the ballots, returned the results to the local jurisdictions for the approval. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of New Richland, city council, New Richland Board of Canvas, approve the results of the general election, a copy of which is attached hereto. Passed, adopted, and approved on the fourteenth day of November, two thousand twenty-two. Signed by Gail Schmidt, mayor, and attested by Anthony Martin, city administrator.
Is there a motion to adopt that?
I'll make a motion to accept that resolution.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Jody, to approve resolution twenty-two seventeen. Got it?
Yep.
Um, on favor, say aye. Opposed, carry.
Thank you. And then let me just look at this here real quick.
I don't know what he's got going on. Some paper.
I think I can, I'm pretty sure that I can, this requires an order, but I think obviously I can do that. If he doesn't like it, we'll just resign him. That's that lease document for medical, the three thousand dollars a year for leasing that property. That's in the budget now too.
Okay.
Is that down here by the landfill?
Yep.
And see if they cleaned it up.
Yeah, they, they did a lot of work.
It looks good down there.
Right, and then, if there's nothing else, you can close the meeting for our little labor discussion.
Any other discussion?
Do we need a motion?
To close, yes you do.
Move to go into, um, closed session?
Second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Chad, to close the meeting for discussion on negotiations. On favor, say aye. Opposed, carry. All right.